Good evening, and thank you for joining us this evening for the 2025 Garden City Community College Board of Trustees Forum hosted by the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber Government Affairs Committee. My name is Laura Blake Boers, and I currently serve as a member of the Chamber Government Affairs Team and will serve as the moderator for this evening's event. Joining me to help keep track of time is Micah Bunch, President of the Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we welcome the following candidates vying for a seat of the Garden City Community College Board of Trustees: Marilyn Douglas, Leonard Hitz, Robert Larson, Ronaldo Mesa, Alexander Janovic Olinger, and Nicholas Verona. And I must say that as a member of the Finney County Defense Bar, it is nice to be able to be in this side asking the Deputy County Attorney some questions. Candidates, thank you for joining us this evening and taking time out of your busy schedules. The process for tonight's forum will begin with each candidate providing a one-minute opening statement, followed by the question-and-answer session, and will conclude with a one-minute closing statement. The order of candidate introductions was drawn at random. Each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds to respond to each question. This is a closed-question forum. No rebuttal questions or answers will be permitted. Without further delay, we will begin this evening's program with the one-minute opening statements, beginning with Alexander.
Thank you. I'm Alexander Olinger, and I am running for the Board of Trustees because I believe that what we do with education is an investment in our community, is an investment in our economy, and it's an investment in the opportunities that the people of our community will have. I promise, as I work in this position, that I will listen to staff, I'll listen to students, and I'll listen to the community. And I look forward to working with everybody in securing funding for their programs and improving opportunities for our students, investing in education and health care of our students, as well as education, I believe is an essential thing for our community, and I hope that we can look for interesting ways to represent the diversity of our community and help people to have better use of their technology. I believe that AI is important, and these are the things that are important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Thank you, Dwight. I was 37 years as a football coach. In 1994, I brought my family to Garden City Community College where I was... Oh, I'm sorry. Where I was... I was there 10 years as a football coach, and then in 2005, I was... I went to the athletic director's position. I've been on the board for four years here, married to my wife Barb for 48 years. I've got three boys, all married, and 10 grandchildren. And I just really enjoy being with Leonard Hitz and Marilyn Douglas and Sean DeSmith, David Rupp, and Gene Clifford, which is the Board of Trustees' membership. I think that's it.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you. My name is Nick Verona. I currently serve as the Deputy County Attorney, as Laura said in the opening. And what motivated me to run is that local property taxes make up a huge portion of the community college's budget, approximately 44%. And when we're making decisions about how to raise and spend those resources, we need to look at how we are benefiting our local community, because these resources are not unlimited. The taxpayer can only handle so much burden. And so when we make decisions, we should be asking ourselves, how do the... How do the spending of these resources benefit the local community? How do the programs we offer or any new proposed programs benefit the local community? Thank you.
Marilyn?
Hey, good evening, everyone. So first of all, thank you to Mike and Laura and the chamber for providing this opportunity. I appreciate how much they want to educate our community with what's going on in politics. And then just a shout-out to my hubby. Thank you for coming today. We just celebrated our 29th anniversary yesterday. Yeah. So my name is Marilyn Douglas. I...
Thank you. I have been on the board for the past 15 years. It's been my honor to serve and represent the students and the community of Garden City. The reason that I am running again is very simple. I want to continue the fight for fair state funding for community colleges in Kansas. Last legislative session, there were two strong attempts to defund community colleges. But with the trustees of the other 19 community colleges and our lobbyists, we were able to thwart that... those attacks. So it's important for us to remember the benefits of our community college, and I have a ton of time to tell you about that. Please catch me after the session. But please vote for me to help with the continued state funding.
Ronaldo?
Good evening. I want to first thank the chamber for hosting this forum, and I want to thank the people that are here this evening. My name is Ronaldo Mesa. I was born and raised in this community. I attended public schools, also the community college. I have three wonderful children, me and my wife Ellen do, Lauren, Dante, and Taylor, all who were raised here, went to public schools, as well as the Garden City Community College. I am the part-time executive director for Real Men Real Leaders. I'm also a real estate agent for EXP Realty LLC. And I have a property management company called M1 LLC. I currently serve as a secretary treasurer for the High Plains Board of Realtors, if you will. I also sit on the board for the Southwest Kansas Builders Association, and I serve on the board for the Board of Zoning Appeals for Garden City. Thank you.
Leonard?
I've been a champion for Garden City Community College since I moved here 50 years ago. At that time, Garden City was in the growth mode, and we still are today. Garden City Community College has always been a willing partner in the growth of Garden City. Today, we're faced with a lot of problems. However, the Board of Regents is trying to move or push education on the trades and the academics to the major universities. With cuts in the state and federal funds, we're going to be facing challenges and tough times. We could be losing our ability to educate our area students at home and provide a more economical source of education. As a partner of the college, we are prepared to deliver a source of higher education for our area students and the community, and education in the academics as well as the trades that are vital in training skilled technicians in the field of construction, agriculture, technology, and cyber. We will be facing challenging and tougher times in the future, and we need experienced trustees who understand these challenges and are not faced with the learning curve.
Thank you all. At this time, we will begin the interrogation... I mean, question-and-answer section of tonight's forum. As previously stated, each candidate will be allowed 90 seconds to respond to each question. Again, we drew names at random, and we will begin with Bob. What are your top three strategic priorities for Garden City Community College over the next four years, and how would you work to implement them?
That's a good question. You know, I think that we have a great president over there that's sitting here listening to us. I... Because of my past as a football coach and an athletic director, I mean, I believe that we have everything that we need to continue at putting Garden City Community College in the top rankings. Having said that, I really don't know any other thing... anything else that a Board of Trustees' member could do. Maybe, you know, like I think Leonard does a great job of... He's around everybody all the time. And I don't know that I would put myself in that category right now, but I do believe that our group in the Board of Trustees has done a great job so far.
I believe so.
Yeah?
Sorry, I was waiting for you to click your button, so... Nick?
So my number-one strategic priority is to get the property tax levy under control. I note that it has gone up last several years and is substantially higher than it was. And quite frankly, the taxpayer can only shoulder so much burden. And in that vein, I think the Board of Trustees needs to push the president. I know Dr. Ruda does a great job with the college. But everybody comes to the Board of Trustees with their hand out, because we always need more money for this or that, and everybody wants more, and there's only so much we have. And so that would be my second one, is to push to get the budget under control, to allow us to get the property tax levy under control. And finally, I would push to... Because local community funds so much of the community college, I would push to ensure that we are providing a benefit to the local taxpayer as far as what are they... We fund so much, you know, right now, the local taxpayer gets a very small reduction in the cost of attendance, even though we shoulder so much of the burden of the community college. And I don't think, quite frankly, that's fair, and that's something I would push for.
Thank you. Marilyn?
So my three strategic priorities, as I mentioned in my opening comments, first would be to maintain the state funding. And then I would also add to that to work on federal funding as well. Many of you know that federal funds are being cut here and there, and our funding is no exception. So as well as lobbying at the state, I would also work on lobbying our federal legislators so that they keep in mind what the benefits of a community college are to the state of Kansas as well as to Southwest Kansas. The other strategic priority I would keep working on is student success. As the board, we are always looking at how can we make our students be more successful, whether it's helping them with funding, it's helping them with tutoring, or advising, or helping them to be happy on campus or be safe. Any of those things help students to be more successful. The last thing that I would add would be to continue our vision, and that's what Boards of Trustees should do, is vision for the future, to continue thinking about what our needs are for the future for Southwest Kansas and partnering to get those needs accomplished. For example, the partnership with Empirical and training their employees or the...
Thank you, Marilyn. I'm sorry.
Yep.
That was the buzzer.
That's okay.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
Well, there are several areas, you know, that we could talk of, the students, the parents, the fiscal responsibility, all that is... You know, there's just several areas that we would be responsible, or I would be responsible if elected. One of them would be obviously the fiscal impact, you know, that it has on the taxpayer. And but same time, ensure quality education for our students that are going here, whether it's here locally, in-state, out-of-state, doesn't matter. And provide Dr. Ruda, you know, the tools and resources so that these students can have success. We need to engage the community. We need to understand where we're at, and if we need to shore up some things, then we need to do that. We need to constant communication with the students, with the parents, with the taxpayer. And, you know, if we're falling down somewhere, then we need to work on those areas. But I didn't have any top three, I mean specifically, but there's a lot there to contend with. And mainly is keep our colleges, you know, functioning and provide an education for the people that go to school there. It's just not about the students. There are adults that go to school there as well. So, yeah, that's what I would say.
Thank you. Leonard?
Well, the board's heard me say this so many times, they're tired of hearing it. But my vision for Garden City Community College is to be the shining light at the top of the hill. How do we get there? We get there by providing the best education we can, by recruiting the best instructors we can find, getting them the resources they need to be, that instructor. I think that there's a lot of things that can be done. We've been a good partner with the community and the growth. And, you know, I'm of the opinion, you grow or you digress. And if you want to grow, you're going to have to keep going on. And I know people are complaining about taxes, and I agree with them. I don't like them. But I pay them because I believe in Garden City. I believe in Garden City Community College. I believe in us being successful and doing what we do. There are times that if we weren't doing our part, for example, every time they come for a tax abatement, we go along. If we didn't, we wouldn't have maybe sometimes raised the levy. But we do that, because that's what a good partner does. We're not going to sit there and fight them. I think we also have the idea of student-first, and you go out and you walk around campus and talk to our instructors. We've got some of the best instructors that you're ever going to find. Our administrative staff is top-notch. The faculty... I mean, the staff. Go look at the campus and see how clean it looks.
Thank you. Alexander?
As a Board of Trustee, the three most important things for me will be securing funding for the college, ensuring that students have health care that is available to them, and ensuring that our students learn how to use AI appropriately. I feel that funding is something that we need to fight for as the Board of Trustees, as we see our national and state funding is constantly at risk, and I think that we need to fight for that and try our best to secure and stop the decreases in funding that we see in the state and in the national government. That will decrease the need for local property taxes by funding... getting funding in those ways. But I too support paying those, because I believe that whatever it is that we do to educate the students in our school is an investment in our future and an investment in our community. I think health is very important, because students cannot learn if they don't have their basic needs met. And I look forward to working with the healthcare available in our community, as well as... I think AI is an important tool that our students will need to use in the future, and it's not going away. So I think we should be working really hard to implement a plan to use that appropriately in our college. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, we'll start off with you on this next one. For many years, the Board of Trustees has utilized what is called policy governance as their governance model. Do you believe that this remains the most efficient and effective form of governance for the Board of Trustees, or should the Board of Trustees take a more active role in determining the policies of the college?
No, I think policy governance is fine. I just think the Board of Trustees cannot abdicate its role to set those policies and those limits. I don't think the Board of Trustees should be in the business of approving every purchase from the college or micromanaging Dr. Ruda as he runs everything. But there are big decisions that have to be made, and that's the Board of Trustees' job. I view policy governance as a sort of setting guardrails for the college president so that he can run the college and provide that education. It's not about stepping in and saying, "No, you have to do this because we said so," because that may not fit the overall... There's a lot of ripples in the pond that happen whenever you do one thing. And so I think the best thing for the Board of Trustees to do is to listen to Dr. Ruda, but also be able to tell Dr. Ruda no sometimes when he comes to the board and says, "Oh, I want this much money." Well, maybe we don't have that much money. We can set the guardrails and allow Dr. Ruda to operate within those instead of micromanaging him and the running of the college.
Thank you. Marilyn?
I love this question. Thank you. I appreciate it. So for the 15 years that I have been on the board, we've managed or governed by policy governance. And just to explain to you, the board sets the ends or the products that we expect the president to produce. And the five ends that we have right now include essential skills, workforce development, work-preparedness, academic advancement, and personal enrichment. And so he... The president is charged to produce positive contributors to our society through those ends. I love policy governance. I think it works well. I attended the national conference this past year, and many of the community colleges are also adopting policy governance. There was several classes on it. So it does work. It's successful, and I would continue to support it.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
Yeah, I don't take issue with that. I'd, to be honest with you, I'm not quite familiar with it, so I need to study it. But I think the way the college is ran is fine. I think as a team, you work as a team to set the direction of the community college, and you give Mr. Ruda, President Ruda, again, the resources and what he needs in order to operate the college. You know, one person can't do anything, period. So it takes a team, and I believe that's part of the governance model. And again, I don't know a whole lot about it, but I'm willing to look into it and understand it and help me... guide me as if I become a trustee on the board.
I'll help you. Thank you. Leonard?
Well, when I first heard about it, I didn't like it. After I got into it, I think it's the best way to do. You can't have seven people running the college. The president keeps us advised on everything. I don't care how small you might think it is. The relationship between the president and the board is unbelievable. We have weekly memos. If anything goes on that he doesn't advise us on, and when questions come up and there's something that needs to be voted on, the board votes one voice. But by the time we get done, we have looked at every aspect of what it is that they're asking for or how we're going to handle the problem. We're going to be facing budget problems. I can tell you right now that there are points... point-blank on what's going to do, what they can cut, where they can go, how we can handle all of those problems. But it won't be done just because he says or wants it. It'll be done because he has come to the board and explained it. We understand it. We know that it's the right way, and at that point in time, if there is a need for some questions or some answers, he's open. He's not a closed door. But the policy governance that we have is the best way there is to run that college.
Thank you. Alexander?
I also feel like it's an appropriate way to run the college, and my most important thing on how we run the college is I believe that academic freedom of the instructors and our leaders in the college is most important. I believe that our leaders in our college should have the freedom to say how they feel, and college is a great place for students to learn lots of opposing ideas. And I don't in any way approve limiting the free speech of those who work for the college.
Thank you. Bob?
I would agree with everything that has been said here. I mean, one of the biggest things I think we do as a board is to help the president and the staff get what every student really wants, if you really look at it. It's a great way to have someone that is totally into what, you know, getting an education. That's really what it's all about. I think that we, as a Board of Trustees, really do take every considering point that we've got given to us, and I think we do a great job of taking care of not only the president and the staff, but we try to do everything we can for the students as well.
Thank you. Marilyn, we'll start the next round with you. What do you believe is your role as a trustee in determining if a program should be implemented, expanded, or eliminated? And what criteria would you use to make those determinations?
We mentioned policy governance, and there is a section on this that we charge the president to review programs for their effectiveness and their value to the community college. I trust the president to tell me whether or not this program is of value to the college. And so that is the criteria I use for supporting his decisions. He looks at the cost of the program. He looks at the enrollment in the program. He looks at the faculty that is providing the courses. All of those are factors into the decision that the president makes about a program. And so I would support his expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
Could you repeat that question?
Certainly. What do you believe is your role as a trustee in determining if a program should be implemented, expanded, or eliminated? And what criteria would you use to make those determinations?
Well, again, you have to analyze the situation and what is being provided, currently provided, to the student body, and as well as take Dr. Ruda's input and so forth. Just that data alone could help decide, again, on whether this is something that we need to continue or we need to change course. The learning is changing dramatically. Someone brought up AI. I think that we need to really be aware of that. I think we are, because it is changing the way these graduates are... towards their degrees. Some of the liberal arts degrees are now AI-related, and a lot of these students are starting to look at the trades for a way to have a way of life. You could start out as almost $80,000 as a plumber or electrician. And again, it's... AI is going to have a dramatic impact, and we really need to keep an eye on that and how it's impacting the students, you know, and their ability to learn. I do know this, they're going to have to... I think more and more employers are going to... I do know this, they're going to have to, I think more and more employers are going to require the students to know AI and to use the tools and resources to help them be successful. So...
Thank you. Leonard?
I thought you was going that way.
No, I'm just making sure Mike is taking care of you.
Well, that's really the job of the president, to look at new things that we need. For example, trade schools, tech schools, whatever you want to call them. Are they fitting the community? Are they doing a benefit to the community? Right now, they are. That's just one area. But that's the responsibility. But when they do this, it's not just a snap judgment. It's all brought before us. It makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, there's a reason why. Is it financially the right thing to do? Is it going to benefit more students? Those are the things that go into making this consideration of adding new programs or going away with a program. It's also got to have some merit with HLC, which is Higher Learning Commission. That's got to be in there somewhere, because they are the ones that say, "What you're selling is worth what you're paying for it," or "You're getting something that is of value." So adding new programs, I think it's something we need to look at. But I'm going to listen to the people that know them, the teachers that know them, and their advice. I don't understand all of that, and there's a lot that goes into it.
Thank you. Alexander?
I think that making decisions on which programs are needed to continue and which ones we shouldn't are something that require lots of voices and which we should listen to the staff that are working with those positions, the students involved in those positions, as well as the needs in our community before we make these decisions. I feel like there are lots of changing things in the world. And while things are changing, the necessary things for our personal community may change. But there's a lot of people that we have to pay attention to. A lot of people who feel like different programs are important to them. And so I will be listening to everybody who has a stake in it. I will listen to the staff involved. I will listen to the students in that, as well as the people in the community, to make such a decision, as well as the president. I think they all have voices that are important for us to listen to. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I believe the process of doing this is trying to make sure that not everybody can have exactly what they want out of this. But I do believe that we take great care in preparing students in every kind of category that there is. I don't, in my four years, I don't believe we've ever done anything that took something away from students and, of course, you know, teachers as well. So I think that Dr. Ruda knows what is needed, and we, as a Board of Trustees member, will do everything we can to make sure that that is taken care of.
Thank you. Nick?
So when we're talking about programs for the college, I think we have to ask two basic questions. What value does the program have to the community? And I say "community," not the college, but the community, because the college shouldn't operate for its own benefit. It should benefit the community. And how does this program benefit the students enrolled in it? We should ask ourselves, does this train or educate students in areas that we need in our community? Because if it doesn't, it's not providing any benefit. It's not going to benefit the students, because they're going to have no job prospects, or they're not going to be able to use that education. Is there an economic benefit to our community? I recognize we are an agriculturally-based community. I know we have programs at the college that support that, whether they be equipment mechanics, the trades. Those are really beneficial to our community. But we also have to look at what it costs, right? If it benefits the community X, but it costs 20 times that, maybe it's not a program for us. And finally, as far as benefits to the students, we don't want to charge students and spend money on programs that have no prospects, because then you're just saddling students with debt and having them be disgruntled because you didn't provide them a valuable education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronaldo, we'll start with you on this one.
You got it, buddy.
The board receives five-year academic reviews on all programs, discussing past achievements and future opportunities. What is your vision for advancing the programs at the college? And how would you ensure they align with both student demand and regional workforce needs?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. The board receives five-year academic reviews on all programs, discussing past achievements and future opportunities. What is your vision for advancing the programs at the college? And how would you ensure they align with both student demand and regional workforce needs?
Well, maybe a couple of ideas here. When we take in a student, and after they've been acclimated into the college or they're down a ways, I think we should ask them, "How well are we doing? Were we meeting your expectations?" And get some feedback that way. And the other thing is, when they're done, repeat it again and ask them, "Did we succeed? Did we pass the test?" No pun intended. But I think you have to ask the customer how well, you know, we are doing. And I think by that, that would help tremendously. Give us feedback. Are we doing a good job in educating folks that are, you know, coming to the college? And for their parents, for the parents to know that we're doing a good job. And they're pleased sending their student there, you know, here to Garden City.
Thank you. Leonard?
You're asking a question that I'm not really qualified to have an opinion on, because that's not my business. I have to rely on the people that are at the college, Mark Malone, who comes along and tells us whether those classes are right or wrong. It's something that I have to rely on the people that are there, that are teaching the people, that are the students. I guess maybe one thing that I would rely on is I go out, and I'm on campus quite a bit, and I go around and I talk to the teachers. I get a lot of information that way. But for me to sit here and say, "Well, we got a five-year review, and we don't need this anymore," I'm going to rely on the people that are going to tell me that, and they're going to give me the facts that they have. I don't know. I'm not in it every day. It's a part of being a trustee that we rely on those people that we hire, and we evaluate from that.
Thank you. Alexander?
I think that it's important, as a college, that we learn how we can help students to market themselves. I think students need to learn, whatever it is that they've studied at college, they can get a job with it. I don't think there's good degrees, bad degrees. A lot of it is just students need to learn how to take what they've learned and use it to get a job. There's all kinds of degrees that people could say that they think are worthless or are not good enough. And we cannot determine whether or not they're good or not based solely off of what happens without gathering facts, like who can get a job from them. And if we do find degrees that maybe are not producing, that people are not able to find jobs for, I would work on using ways to help students find ways to market what they've learned in their futures. I think that it's very important that we not only evaluate just a program, maybe we evaluate what we are teaching the students to do with the program that we've given them.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I would agree with what everybody has been talking about, because in our five-year academic review, you know, we try to put students in a situation where they're always going to be having an opportunity to finish a program. You know, it's not as easy as it looks at sometimes. But I believe that, I believe, again, Dr. Ruda and his staff do a great job of keeping us informed, and I believe we do a great job of helping them figure out what is the best way to have the best effect on students at Garden City Community College.
Thank you. Nick?
Well, aside from my three-year-old, I hear "Uh-oh" in the next room. "I'm sorry, Daddy," that's what she would say. The scariest phrase I ever hear is, "We do it a certain way because we've always done it that way." And you cannot, that cannot be your way of doing things. And so when you're doing a review of programs, I don't think the Board of Trustees can abdicate its role and rely solely on what the administration is telling it. Though I do believe the opinion of the administration carries great weight, it cannot be dispositive. Otherwise, why would you have a Board of Trustees at all if you were simply going to be a rubber stamp for whatever the college administration wanted? And so when evaluating programs, you cannot be afraid to expand, or cut, or modify those programs as necessary to meet student demand, to meet the needs of the community, and to ensure that the college remains, keeps providing a resource to the community. So that's what I would say, is I will be engaged and look at how these programs are benefiting us and whether or not we should continue funding them and take into account the recommendations of the administration, but also my own knowledge and opinion. Thank you.
Marilyn?
So the five-year academic reviews of each of the programs are part of the HLC, Higher Learning Commission, requirements for our accreditation at the college. So they're very important programs to review and go through. It is the faculty and the administration that will look at the effectiveness of the program, and they look at the effectiveness of the student. And they make the plan for an improvement for that particular program, whether they need more equipment, or they need more faculty, or they have a different teaching method that they're going to work on. So it's their improvement plan that comes out of the five-year academic programs. As a trustee, it's our job to listen to the community. And we listen to find out what the needs are so that we can carry those communications back to the college that relate to the programs. That's our job. It's not our job to judge the students on their academic grades. It's our job to be the visionary people of the community to make sure that the community college is meeting those needs for the future. Thanks.
Thank you. I hope you realize that you're next in the line here, right?
Oh, you can skip.
Oh, okay. So Leonard, partnerships with Kansas State University, Newman University, and Fort Hayes State University allow Garden City Community College students to complete bachelor's degrees locally. How would you expand partnerships like these to enhance seamless degree pathways, especially for underserved populations?
Again, you're asking me a question that's pretty tough for me to answer. I think what we're doing is fantastic. I think all of these partnerships that we can have are the things to be doing, because we're going to be serving more people at a lower cost. If we allow us to get shoved off like HLC seems to want to do and push everything to the Big Three, we're going to be looking for a lot of partnerships. We're going to look for all kinds of ways to be serving everybody. What the needs are, I guess maybe we'd have to go over to the Adult Education Department and find out from them what some of the needs that are out there. Well, who do we need to go to for partnerships and what you need? The partnerships that we have with Tyson and places like that, I think they fill a lot of, do a lot of good for people that get trained on something. I think we got some things working with the new, I don't even know the name of it anymore, the plant out there. And yeah, we're working with that. K-State and the ones that we have, if you can come to get your formal agriculture degree and get it by staying here in Garden City, get it through K-State, I say, go for it. Because that's going to be a lot less, and we're going to be able to keep a lot more of our people right here when we get done, if they complete that while they're here.
Thank you. Alexander?
If you look over the past few decades, in Western Kansas, a big problem that we've had is a lot of people moving away to go to college and then not coming back. I believe that it's important for us to find many ways that we can increase opportunities for students to continue with their education here in Garden City. Because as they work here in Garden City and they complete their degree, they won't have as many reasons to leave. And as we work together with bigger universities to bring programs here, we can bring opportunities to our students, to the students that we have here. And we have a lot of diversity here, and it's very important for us to make sure that we give opportunities to get education to everybody that is in our community. We have problems with food insecurity and problems with people not having enough money sometimes to go all the way to another place and be able to survive. And being able to stay here with their family is, at work while they're studying, is a very important thing that many of the people in our community need, and I will continue to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, again, I believe that, I believe that these three schools that are trying to help our students, without a doubt, I think it's a very positive thing, especially with Newman. They are doing everything they can to help students here that we can, you know, they don't have to go to Wichita to have this happen. They're actually bringing people to us and giving our students that opportunity to make a better life for themselves. Having said that, I think that, excuse me, I think that all students want to be the best that they can be in everything that they do. And I think that having these opportunities do help that each student can, if they want to, if they work hard enough, I believe that they can get it all done.
Thank you. Nick?
So just a little bit about me and this kind of partnership. Sorry. Just a little bit about me and these partnerships. I completed my first two years of college at a community college in Iowa. And I received my bachelor's degree through a partnership program with the community college, where I was living a different community college. And so that community college had partnered with Buena Vista University, and that's where I got my bachelor's degree going to school at night. I find those programs extremely beneficial, because they do allow people to continue to work and live in our community. And it helps the talent not go away. Additionally, oftentimes, you're drawing, then you're drawing instructors in those bachelor's degree programs from our local community. And you're essentially creating networking opportunities for students in the local community that they would not have if they would go to, like, Fort Hayes State or K-State, and they go away. So as a beneficiary of such a program, I fully support it. And as a member of the Board of Trustees, I would absolutely support it.
Thank you. Marilyn?
So the challenge is for anybody going to college is affordability, right? I mean, our community college is in our backyard. That's pretty cool. So all of our citizens that... So all of our citizens that live here can attend college and they don't have to have a second home in another community. So that helps with affordability. We also have choices of programs. You know, we have over 50 different programs at Garden City Community College that someone can pick from to start their studies. The four-year schools that have partnered with us are providing a degree in business, a degree in social work, and some agricultural degrees. Those are things that we need in this community. So whatever we can do to encourage and further those partnerships is very well time and money spent. So that's, I support all of that effort for four-year degree opportunities. I lived in Montana and Wyoming. Do you know how many community colleges are in Wyoming? One. You're right. How many, how many universities are in Wyoming? One. Yeah. So for, having it in your backyard is so, so special. So we have to take care of it.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
I think Dr. Ruda at the college has done a tremendous job in this area of developing relationships with K-State, Newman, and a number of degrees now that these students have at their fingertips. I did know about all of them and tell Dr. Ruda to share them, and I think that's awesome. Also, Syracuse Community College and the CDL, be able to get your CDL, because the trucking is huge, because we're an ag-based economy here. And the other piece is continue to improve the relationship with Tyson, Empirical, the construction industry, from plumbing to HVAC to electrical companies, and also the service industry. You know, you used to hear, man, customer service sucks, you know, in a lot of these places. That may seem like a small detail, but it really isn't, because a lot of kids, and I work, of course, with real men or leaders, a lot of these kids just need to know that basic element right there. And, and so the service industry is equally important, and to Marilyn's point, we're, it's a pretty good deal here. One, what's $132 for Kansas residents, Dot City's $145 per credit hour, you have Syracuse Community College, $148. In the long run, roughly 30 credit hours here is the annual cost of $30,000, $3,000 and $40 here at our community college. You compare that to Fort Hayes, that's $4,650, and Wichita State, it's almost $8,000.
Thank you. Well, as someone who's paying two tuitions at K-State... Alexander, what other infrastructure investments, especially in technology, facilities, or accessibility, should be prioritized in the updated master facilities plan?
I just want to ask if you skipped Leonard on purpose?
No, he started off with the partnerships.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. I believe that this would be something that I would rely on the president to inform me a little bit about more. I haven't studied a lot about the buildings and their repair, but I do believe that having buildings that have good repair is something that's very important, and that having the most latest technology is something that's very important for our schools. And I think that, as I said before, AI is a technology that's super important for me. And I think that as we continue to grow into a world that's using AI even more, AI is something that's going to become more and more important, and it's not something that's going to go away. So I think we need to implement really good plans in how we can get students to use it in an ethical way, but also realize that it's going to be a partner that we have for the future, kind of like a calculator in math class. Thank you.
Bob?
Could you ask, or answer that question one more time?
Sure. What other infrastructure investments, especially in technology, facilities, or accessibility, should be prioritized in the updated master facilities plan?
Well, again, I think that is a, I think that's something that the president and his staff would probably be a little bit more in step with. I think the Board of Trustees do, do what we can to make the best opportunity for every student that we have at Garden City Community College. I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know that if, you know, you put too much in one basket over here, it kind of takes away from opportunities that other people might have or need. But it is, it is, I think, an important issue to get as many students, give them what they most definitely want.
Thank you. Nick?
Well, when it comes to technology, I am not a huge supporter of AI. I think it has become a crutch for students. I think it has dulled their ability to think and process information, and I think it has made them lazy. And they don't use it as a tool. They use it as a way to get over and get done with things, and they've learned nothing. That doesn't mean it's going away. However, I think as a college and as an educational institution, you need to ensure that students are not using that as simply a crutch to get by. And I had a long talk with, I have a 17-year-old stepson, I had a long talk with him about AI, and he was flat-out told me, he said, one, they usually get caught when you write them with AI, but at the two, he's like, I don't learn anything. And so I think it's important as we, in our technology plan, that we do it in a way that allows students to learn and not simply use AI to regurgitate things that AI finds on the internet, and your students have learned nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments about AI, but I would also add, it's not going away, and we have to use it, and we have to teach our students how to use it effectively. So the community college is already instructing the faculty on how to manage that, and I really appreciate that. Actually, and those classes are open to the public, too, so, if you're interested. I think the other infrastructure items that we should put on our strategic plan, first of all, we rely on our plant director, who gives us the rundown of what's going on on the plant and the facilities. But I think at some point, one of our big purchases is going to be a new dorm. And one of our dorms, two of our dorms are pretty old, they're original buildings, so that is something that's looming. And probably something else that we need to look at would be, we are looking at our streets and starting the repairs on those. So we just finished our Garden City Career Connections Academy remodel, so if you haven't had a chance to go over there, please do. It's amazing. And that is the place where our English as a second language, adult education, citizenship classes are being held. It's in the old skating rink building. So get a chance to go over there.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
Yeah, I think that's a Dr. Ruda and staff-driven priority, but also work with the board to shore up whatever he thinks is needed, you know, based on the needs. I think we need to continue to prove, if there needs to, improvement, if it needs it, is the robotics and STEM programs that they currently, they currently have. As far as AI, yes, I would agree with Marilyn, that it's not going to go anywhere, that we should not fear AI, that we should embrace it, because again, the reporting I'm reading is that the employers are going to require their employees to understand the use of AI and the tools in order to be successful. Does it have, is there detriment? Absolutely there is, but that's with anything, you know, in our lives. So I would think that AI should be a priority. We need to understand it and use it to the best of our abilities and to help students be prepared as they move forward under their degrees.
Thank you. Leonard?
I would like you to repeat that question, because it appears to me we've got off of what you were asking about on the, what AI, and everybody's got an opinion on AI. Am I understanding that right?
You can answer it however you like, but I will rephrase or restate it. What other infrastructure investments, especially in technology, facilities, or accessibility, should be prioritized in the updated master facilities plan?
Well, we do have need for streets, we do have nudes for new dorms. If you're looking at the future, there's a lot of cybersecurity, we've had a lockdown, I'm sure we've gone, got to go through that. There's a lot of things in there that we could go and review and find that, yeah, I'd like to see us improve all that. I could name you a lot of things that I'd like to see, but I don't know if that's really the ones that the administration and the people in the physical plant think we need. Security, I'd like to see us keep our security up to date all the time. Cyber, that's going to be a big thing, and I'd like to see us getting to the front of all of that. What are the facilities that we need for that? I don't know. I don't know what it takes to be a cyber expert, other than a computer probably, or satellite stuff, but those are a lot of things that I don't understand, but I would yield to those people that do understand it and can, if it's Dr. Ruda or the instructors, I'd yield to what they have to say, and then I'll sit back and decide if that's what I think I want to see.
Thank you. Bob, next one for you. Safety is a concern, going along with what Leonard just said, on campuses nationwide. How will you prioritize efforts to keep students and staff safe on campus?
Well, again, in my football coaching career, and that as an athletic director, those things, you know, you always try to make sure that every student is going to have an opportunity to remain safe, and doing everything that you can to make sure that they, they understand what, what being in trouble might really look like. You know, when I was young, and I went to a junior college in Pratt, Kansas, and then went to Colorado State, and there's quite a bit of difference between going to a four-year institution and then a junior college. I think you're, those people that go to a community college, you know, they need to make sure that, you know, all their i's are dotted and t's are crossed, because you could, you can, I should say, get into some deep, deep trouble. And, you know, I think, I think our administration and our staff do a great job of trying to protect every single person and make sure that they're going in the right direction.
Thank you. Nick?
So first of all, you want to encourage students, staff, everybody to have personal security measures, and what that really means is, you know, understand your surroundings, lock your doors, secure your valuables, but also ensuring that the resources are available to have an able campus police force. You know, I deal with crime in my day job, and it's, you have to be proactive, because waiting for something to happen and then handling it afterwards is not going to, somebody's safety's already been violated at that point. So you have to both encourage people to take personal security, take it seriously, but also you have to encourage, to provide resources to ensure that campus security, campus police are available and can respond as necessary, and that they also are there as a deterrent, because sometimes just being there is enough to deter criminal activity.
Thank you. Marilyn?
So I'm going to go back to policy governance again. One of the expectations to the president is that he ensures a safe and healthy campus, and he reports back to the board every six months what that means or what that's defined as. But you can never have enough security on campus. We need to continually look at and update our camera system to make sure that it's keeping our students safe. We do have the campus police, and we have increased their force recent, in recent years. I trust Rodney, when he works on his plans for an intruder on campus, and he has practices on how we, as a campus, handle that. Communications is another something that's very important. The college has worked on alert systems that alert all the students, all the cap, the faculty, all the administration at once through a phone system. So keep those systems going and keep listening to what's happening in the world so that we can hopefully stay ahead of the next threat that happens.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
Unfortunately, we live in a, in a world that hasn't been so kind lately, and I, I'm not sure, I've not talked to Dr. Ruda about his plan, but, and, you know, a safety plan, but what I would encourage is that we have a plan, not only within the camp itself, but also with the police department, the fire department, the Fannie County Emergency Department, work together, because if something happens on campus, and you may be limited with manpower, it'd be nice to have some backup. So I think that that's real important, is having a overall plan, not within, just within the campus, but citywide. And also encourage the students that if they hear something or see something on social media that isn't quite right, report that. Report that to somebody, because that's where we fall down, that's where we fail, okay? Either out of fear, or, you know, you just want to keep your mouth shut, but that's, when we allow evil to exist and we say nothing or do nothing, then we're really in trouble. And we can't afford to do that, whether it's on our campus college or anywhere in society. So that's what I would encourage.
Thank you. Leonard?
Security is changing so much with all of the new cameras, the, all of that that there is. And we just approved an update in our cameras and adding more cameras. I don't know how many, I don't have the number, we added a bunch of new cameras. I've tried to go down and get in at times when the doors are locked, and all of the doors locked, and I kind of like that idea, that, I mean, it's just one call and they can lock all of those doors. That's going to keep a lot of people safe. Maybe it's going to hurt some, I don't know, but for the most part, it's going to keep everything safe. But you can never be lax in security. And I agree that Rodney and they have, I think it's what they call some program where they immediately advise everybody, and he does a good job with the police force, keeping them informed, and with our local, our city police. Courtney, they, they communicate with Courtney, the chief of police. You can never take security lightly, because it's going to bite you somewhere if you do. And I don't have any specifics that I think that I would like to see us do, other than just keep doing what we're doing. I, you know, I asked Lance the other day, how, on the computer, are we secure? Yes, we're doing everything we can. To me, that's, that's the answer I need, because I know he's not going to lie to me, and he darn sure has already gone over it with the president. So if he's done that, I'm pretty secure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Thank you. Alexander?
For me, in education, I think it's important that we look to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, where he said that the most important basic needs before we can learn are to have our basic needs and security. Security is something that's very important for... Security is something that's very important for our students, so I will work with our campus police in making plans to make sure that we have a way to help students be safe from attacks or safe just in general, knowing that one out of three women and one out of six men report that they've been victims of sexual abuse or other such, uh, things. I think it's important that we make it easy for victims to report when they have been victimized, as well as we make it easy for people to get help and to find help when they need it. We also need to encourage people to report stuff that they see and we shouldn't make people feel bad for doing that. We should, uh, always encourage people when they see something that's wrong or something that's not supposed to be happening, that they say something about it and that they act for it. As well as I think it's very important in, uh, providing people with counseling and help in school is something that's very important. And as a member of the Board of Trustees, I will always be working for students to get their hierarchy of needs met and those are the things that are most important. Food, shelter, and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick? How will you ensure transparency in your role as trustee and foster meaningful engagement with students, staff, and community stakeholders? How will you ensure transparency in your role as trustee and foster meaningful engagement with students, staff, and community stakeholders?
So, transparency is pretty easy because in Kansas, the activities of a public body are essentially open to the public, both the records of the public body as well as the meetings conducted. Essentially, you have to be transparent. I don't have anything to hide and I don't think the activities of a, uh, elected board should be hidden from the public. Meaningful engagement, I think it's being available. I think it's when people have questions or want to talk to you, engage with them to find out what their concerns are, to see if it's something that you can do on the board. Uh, as far as, you know, that's community members, but students, I know, um, we, Leonard talked about going out on campus, just listening sometimes is the best thing because the board, a member of the Board of Trustees is not able to make decisions on their own, but they can gather information on their own that can be beneficial to the board as a whole. And so, being out, being available, speaking to people is something that I would do as a member of the Board of Trustees to gather information that could benefit the decision-making process of the board.
Thank you. Marilyn?
So, if we, um, propose or live transparency as we start our responsibility as a trustee and carry that through, through your term of serving, that becomes the norm and that's how I look at transparency, is that it's always there and it needs to be there. I don't, I'm like you, Nick, I don't want to hide anything from anybody, good or bad. And I learned a long time ago that it's easier to, to beg forgiveness if something goes wrong than try to hide it. So, um, same thing, um, happens is in trying to make yourself available to the community or be available to the staff or be available to the administration. We have a, a site on our webpage where the community can, um, write in their comments or their, their concerns and we would address that, okay? And it's not anything that's hidden, so I would just continue that process of being transparent.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
Well, um, it's probably one of the most important things we can do as a trustee is be very transparent with what's going on within the college. And I would say making yourself available, um, and putting yourself out there, ask questions, even the students, if you know the parents, don't be afraid to ask, "How are we doing? How's your child like going to school at the Garden City Community College?" I think you could have regular community meetings. I think you could, uh, maybe have the meetings available on social media. I know years ago when I was on the city commission, I advocated for us to be televised. Some embraced it, some didn't, and I can understand that. A comment was made, "Well, they'll never, they'll never, they'll never watch it." Well, that's not for us to decide, you know, but you sure can measure that. But really, in a nutshell, it's just making yourself available to the public in all sorts of ways that you can. And, uh, and I've, I've tried to do that. I've held several leadership positions and I think that's the best way, uh, to, you know, to hear, um, how the community feels on what's going on, whether it's a city commission, county commission, school district, or, or the college.
Thank you. Leonard?
Back to what I said earlier, be there, get out. I go, I spend a lot of time on campus, start walking around and talking. Let's take it outside of campus. We also have the ownership linkies that we need to be doing when we get out in the community. There's times, and I want to, I really want to stress this because this is the way I feel we are supposed to do it. When some, they can come to me and they can tell me their problem. They can give it to me. I'm not going to try and resolve it for them. I'll thank them for it. I will take that to the president. There was one time I went and a young man I knew very well, he's a friend of mine, but he had a problem. And so, I said, "Okay, I heard you." I went to Ryan and Ryan said, "Yeah, here, blah, 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 we're doing this, we're doing that." I said, "Damn it, Rudy, you're always ahead of me." And being out on, invisible and when they bring it something though, it's not my job to try and correct it. It's my job to give it to the president or whoever is in charge of, give it to the president because, oh, in the military, that's where you would take it. You would take it at higher and they'd give it down. And I think that's probably the best thing. Don't hesitate to go out and talk to them. That, a lot of times they tell me things that they don't want somebody to know, but if they tell it to me, I'm going to tell it to the president anyway.
Thank you. Alexander?
I think our community is full of a lot of people with many great ideas and so, one of the most important things as a Board of Trustees, trustee will be to listen to every member of our community. Students are important because they are the center of everything that we're going to be doing and so, their opinion, I think, should have a lot of clout and a lot of, uh, importance in, uh, decisions that we make. Also, the faculty, I think too often, uh, lots of times people, when they work for a job, don't often feel like they get a voice and I think it's important that we listen to everybody's voice, including the faculty and then our community. The, all the decisions that we make will be affecting our community and so, we need to listen to the community. And then also the administration, they, they're listening to everybody as well and they have great ideas and so, I think we just need to give everybody a shout out for being great people in our community and listen to all of them and we can probably get more good ideas by listening to other people than we would get just listening to ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, again, transparency, uh, especially to the public is, is, I think, um, a very high standard to live by, but that's what we should be doing. I know that I had a, a good friend who was a farmer. Uh, he came in and, um, was kind of complaining about how, how we were handling, um, his situation and, uh, although, although we did have to do what he didn't want us to do, um, i- it's transparent. I mean, we were transparent all the way from the beginning to the end. I think having, um, uh, ownership linkage on the Board of Trustees, uh, you get to know, you get to know exactly, um, you know, what you should be doing and how you should be doing it and, and being as transparent as you can.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to do multiple choice, final round, speed, speed lightning? No, I'm kidding, kidding. So, we are doing the final question for you, Marilyn. So, take a deep breath, final question. Marilyn, how should elected officials be held accountable for maintaining high ethical standards and what ethical principles do you believe are important for elected officials?
It's professionalism that we are held to. So, as an elected official, I am going to represent the public professionally. I'm going to do my best to be on my best behavior. I'm going to be communicative to, to the constituents and to the community. Um, I'm going to listen. I'm going to listen to what they have to say. I'm going to report those, um, comments back to the president and we're going to deal with them. So, that's what I would say. It's professionalism, good listening skills, um, being available, being out there. That would be, um, what I would expect of a public official.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
Well, we're, you know, we're, when you serve in a capacity like this, you're held to a very high standard. And so, you, you gotta, you gotta pay attention to, to your behavior where you're at at all times. I mean, there, there's cameras all over the place anymore, so somebody's always watching you. So, I would say the same, yeah, be, be on your, you know, your best behavior, being professional, being available and, and, and listen to what the people, uh, are wanting to visit with you about and don't discount them. Everybody's important to me, you know? I may not fully believe in what they, they, they may want or they're saying, but I'll guarantee, I'll give you the time to listen and then take it to Dr. Ruda and, you know, if it has something to do with the college and, and, and maintain that, that type of standard. You always have to give staff the benefit of the doubt, but, uh, people are always watching you and if you're going to run for city commission or any of these positions, uh, Board of Trustees, um, you're held to a very high standard and, um, you need to act like as such.
Thank you. Leonard?
I guess the thing that goes through my mind is I'm always aware that people are watching me and there's a lot of times I walk away, I'll give you a good example, basketball games, yelling at the referee. There are times I went home at night ashamed of myself because I shouldn't act that way. And I think it's, you have to remember, you've got to live a moral standard yourself and if you're, as I believe, if you're a Christian, you're going to live that. It's just that we all have the responsibility of living a moral life because people are watching us and you, we all are going to someday stumble, but, uh, you know, like I said, I honestly went home at night ashamed of myself for the way I acted. So, people are watching you, you've got to live a moral standard because that's what you're going to be judged on.
Thank you. Alexander?
I think first and foremost, it will be, uh, my job as a member of the Board of Trustees to learn the local, state, and national laws and make sure that everything I'm doing follows those. I know that there are decisions that I'll have to make and if I find that I may have a conflict of interest, I'll need to disclose that and not make those decisions. Also, I need to listen to the members of the community and try to work to have policies that, uh, support. And then whenever we do mix of, uh, policies, I need to support them, I need to follow them, and I need to know them so that I can do them. I, well, always as a person, uh, in education, I believe in academic freedom, so everything that I will work for will be to give people that right. I believe that education does not work if we don't believe in letting educators educate. I also believe in fighting for the rights of people in need. We have minorities in our community and I will fight for them. We have LGBTQ members of our community and I will fight for them. And we have people with linguistics, uh, that are not English and I will fight for them. Thank you.
Bob?
Well, listening to everybody, I would agree that, uh, being on the Board of Trustees is a very high standard. Uh, we're an elected official and trying to make sure that every single, um, every single thing that, uh, the president wants or we can do on the board, um, you know, trying to get that, uh, through to everybody is sometimes a, a difficult, um, not as easy as it, as it, you know, sounds like it could be. I think having, I think having, um, uh, the president has a great staff. I think the board is, does a great job of making sure that everything that, um, we, we're doing everything that we can to help he and his staff, um, and, and reach those high standards of not, um, not going under the, um, the blanket or whatever you might want to call it, um, because we are elected officials. So, I think it is our, our, um, our, really our, our standard to do is to be the very best we can.
Thank you. Nick?
So, I retired after serving 22 years in the United States Army as a warrant officer and one of the things instilled in me in my time in the army were the army values. These are kind of a set of ethical principles that guide me and I know as a young soldier, they were sort of cliche and everybody laughs at them and, but as you become older, you start to see their value. And those are loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honesty, integrity, and personal courage. Loyalty is about being loyal to what you do and as a Board of Trustees member, you're loyal to the college and loyal to the board. You show up and you do your duty. It's going to be nights, it's going to be doing things that, um, after hours. You respect the other members of the board and the members of the community. You put the needs of others before your own. You always act with honesty because your, your word, i- if it's lost, nobody will trust you or believe you anymore. Integrity means you do what's right, even when nobody is looking. And personal courage is about doing something even though it is hard. You know, sometimes you do things not because they're easy, but because they are hard and sometimes you have to make hard decisions and have personal courage to do it. Thank you.
Thank you all. Take a deep breath. Questions and answers are done. We thank you for your time and your willingness to sit through all of that. Thank you so much. And at this time, we will go to our closing statements and another round was done to pick who was going to go first. And Leonard, we'll start with you, with your one-minute closing.
Garden City Community College has always been dear to me. We're a viable and healthy institution. We serve a purpose here. We are not just here for our own good. We, uh, have been voted number one in the state as the best community college in the state. That just happened, but before that, we'd been voted three times to be one of the top 10 of the best community colleges in the nation to go to work for. That doesn't happen by accident. It happens by the people that we have working at Garden City Community College, starting with the president on down. And I'll, I'll back any one of them anytime as being the best that we have.
Thank you. Ronaldo?
I wouldn't be, pardon me, she reversed on you.
I did.
Yeah, I know, that's okay. Uh, I wouldn't be running if I didn't think the Garden City Community College is probably one of the most important institutions in our community. So, I want to be a part of, of maintaining that, that institution. It served my family well. It serves a lot of families and their students well and I want to continue, I want to be a part of that, have a desire to serve. I've had the, uh, fortunate opportunity and the honor to serve, uh, the city, on the city commission for 11 and a half years. I was voted three times by my colleagues at that time to serve as mayor, to lead the commission. Also did two years in the state house and I've developed many relationships there that many of them are And I've developed many relationships there that, many of them are still there today. I think I'm positioned well to deal with some of these issues, the funding issues. There's been talk about consolidation and so forth, and the border regions. Border regions not serving us very well. And so if we need to take a different direction, then we need to take a look at that and do that, not fear the, you know, the consequences of doing so. So that's why I'm running. And I believe I'm, I'm good for the job.
Thank you. Marilyn?
So there are lots of benefits that Garden City Community College brings to our community and to Finney County. And you are welcome to come and pick up one of these, this is the annual report that comes out each year. It's also available on the web. But I'm not saying that the trustees are responsible for that. The administration does that, and the faculty and the students. Our job as trustee is to ensure that Garden City Community College remains an essential partner to our community and is responsive to the changing needs that will happen in the future. In other words, we're visionary. But I also see my role larger than that in representing Garden City Community College at the state level and at the national level in fighting for funding. And by fighting for funding, I'm fighting for student success. So that's my whole purpose for this next term. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
So in 22 years in the Army, something I learned was how to make a decision. Sometimes decisions are easy and sometimes they're hard. Either way, you would be electing me to evaluate the information, apply my experience and knowledge, and make decisions that best benefit the community with regard to the operation of the community college. It is not about my personal wishes or anything that will benefit me, but what will benefit the community and students. And that doesn't mean we simply rubber stamp whatever anybody else wants, but we make informed decisions about how the college should be run. And that is my promise to you, if you elect me as a member of the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I stated when I first started here this, this evening, I've been at Garden City Community College for 19 years, 10 as a football coach and nine as the athletic director. I, I really, I really do believe that, and then now four years on the Board of Trustees, I really do believe that student success is, is everything that, that, that is needed at, at any institution. But having, having that, having said that, I do believe that it takes time to get to know where, where you are and, and how fast you can learn. But I think Garden City Community College has been a, a great place for me, and I know that students enjoy it as well.
Thank you. Alexander?
As a member of this community, I am running because I believe that I have a lot that I can learn. I have a lot that I can do to serve the people in this community. I believe that we need to fight for funding in education and we don't want to have problems with that. And so I will make a focus of what I'm doing to make sure that we fight to get funding, more funding from our state and more funding from our national government. And also, I believe AI is something that's important, and I think that we need to make sure that we are representing every member of our community. I believe that the linguistics that we have and the linguistic differences we have in our, in our community, and the cultural differences that we have in our community are something that can help us all. And I look forward to learning from the people in this community, whether I win or lose this election, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes tonight's program. Please join me in thanking our candidates for their time. Please join us here tomorrow night for the USD 457 Board of Education Forum, beginning at 6:00 PM. That forum will also be streamed on the City of Garden City and Chambers Facebook page. As a reminder, the general election is set for Tuesday, November 4th, and the voter registration deadline is on October 14th. As a reminder, if you have moved or changed your name, but since the last election, you do need to update your voter registration. We encourage the citizens of Holcomb, Garden City, and Finney County to get out and vote. Candidates, thank you again, and best of luck in November.